She's one. I'm not full timing, but I just, she knows all the buttons in my car. And now she's learned, she's learned how to turn the volume up on the radio because you only got the volume on your steering wheel. So I have to turn the radio off so she won't disturb the neighbors. And every time she turns it off, I am, she'll look at me.
All right. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to Salisbury City Council February 2nd work session. We have a full agenda this evening and we have a small group. I want to say our thoughts are with Councilwoman Mitchell, Council Vice President Mitchell. She's in the hospital right now with migraine, but we hope that she is out soon and able to join us by phone later today. First item on our agenda is charter amendment. This is enumeration, which Jennifer Miller, you're going to have to come explain what that is.
Don't ask me why it's called enumeration.
That's quite all right.
Which we think means numbers.
Okay.
And it does deal with numbers in some sense.
Okay. Excellent. Welcome.
Thank you. So SC 5-1, what that relates to in our charter is basically says that the city can only enter into contracts for the procurement of electricity for a contract that's a maximum length of three years. As we're looking to do solar or wind contracts, none of these providers will do anything, you know, that short of the length. Typically you see 15-year, 20-year because of the upfront cost for them, you know, to install the equipment, to build the equipment. But to enter into any of those contracts, you know, the city has a few things in kind of in the works that we're looking at doing, we can't do any of those contracts without changing this language first. And so that's fine here. I'd like to request that. I'd like to show you all what that language is, what it currently says, and can we, is it something that we can talk about, possibly get on the legislative agenda to change the language in the charter to allow us to enter into contracts for more than what it currently states?
All right. Questions?
This would only apply to energy, correct?
It's...
And water? It said water.
Hang on here. I have, it says to, well, it's actually, it says lighting. To contract with any corporation, firm, or person for the lighting of the city or a part thereof, either with electricity or gas, or by such means as may be deemed proper. And then it talks about into contract for water for use at fires or other city purposes. But we really felt that this tied into what it is we're trying to do to procure electricity for longer contracts.
My, my only thought was that all of that paragraph sounds kind of out of date for the lighting of the, of the city or a part thereof, as if we've just discovered electric light.
The lighting was last week.
Right. So, you know, I don't know if that, you know, that language should be cleaned up just to, for utilities or, yeah, that's probably not the right word, and that's pretty broad. But, you know, for purchase of, of electricity, power, you know. But I would imagine that if we were to, you know, purchase something else, industrial steam, or whatever it may be, you know, we would want the, a similar contract length or the capacity or the ability to extend the contract lengths beyond three years. So I, I don't know. I think wording for that paragraph could be cleaned up, but I have no problem with the request and the structure otherwise.
Okay. And, and just keep in mind also that it wouldn't lock us in to doing something longer. It would at least allow us to even entertain that.
Right. Okay. Is there council consensus to, well, let me ask this first. Would it be your intent to, to go back and, and update that paragraph and maybe bring proposed language? I'd be comfortable if, if the rest of council is with this coming to legislative session with that. We've got a, you know, public hearing, this is a charter change, so there will be some time to, to debate it. But I'd, I'd be comfortable as long as the intent and the purpose doesn't change with not seeing the language until legislative session. But I, I'd ask whether or not, council colleagues, if you felt the same way.
If they could just send out the thing to us.
To email?
That'd be easy. Email it and then we can look at it. I don't have an issue with it.
Okay.
Then if we have an issue with it, we can, we can get back to it.
We can edit it in the meantime.
I sure will.
All right.
We should edit it before the meeting, please.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Okay. So council consensus to move to legislative session. I will ask, since he's here real quick, Mr. Tillman, on the first item on the agenda, enumeration, I don't know if you had anything that you were aware of that you had, took issue with, with what's being proposed?
As far as the charter amendment, no. Any issues that I might have would have to be discussed in closed session with regard to a specific contract.
Okay. But with regard to the charter amendment, no?
No. Charter amendment just gives you more freedom than you now have. Excuse me. I just came back from Baltimore, that's why.
Understood.
I'm sorry.
I will ask their office to work with me on the different languages as well.
The language.
Something more modern.
Thank you.
Jennifer, when you get down the road to maybe, there have been a few long-term agreements that have been done in the last couple of years around, might be good to check with some of those folks and see how they think their contracts are going or something.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And we can give you a couple of names of people who have gone the solar route.
Okay. Yeah, absolutely.
That'd be what's looking at.
Okay.
Thank you.
If you just want to forward that on to me, I can reach out to them.
I will.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Okay. Next item on our agenda is the proposed stormwater utility fee structure. Ask our friends from Public Works to come join us. How are you? Afternoon.
Chuck Greenfield is here. Doing a...
Oh, doing a planning meeting for that right now?
Yeah, just that bolt from that one.
Understood.
Yeah, it's here now.
It's one of those days where it's packed tight with me.
All right. Amanda's been doing, also working this, working with our consultant Eastern Shore Regional GIS Cooperative to develop the impervious area calculations for the non-single-family. We weren't doing any calculations for the single-family because I'm set with the one ERU with the question mark of what kind of ERU count were we going to have in terms of these larger parcels and having to do that. So I'll let her go through what she presented to you in the memo, and then she's also got the calculations in terms of looking at how that would represent in terms of projects we intend to get involved with.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Well, I'll walk through the memo. There's a lot of numbers here, which is why I put it in the memo like this, but essentially the city of Salisbury has just over 12,000 parcels, of which about 7,000 are single-family residential. So as Mike noted, we are considering each of those parcels to be one ERU. So we did not do impervious area calculations on those. However, ESRGC has finished the impervious area calculations on the 5,000 parcels that are non-single-family residential parcels. If you'll recall, a couple of years ago, when the city hired the University of Maryland Environmental Finance Center, they had determined that an average single-family parcel would have 3,344 square feet of impervious surfaces. So that's a number we're using in all of these calculations. Everything is based off of that. And they had looked at that statewide and through another, a number of different municipalities. So that is, that is a key underlying assumption here that we're using. So when ESRGC looked at our about 5,000 parcels that are non-single-family residential, they found that 3,635 of them had less than the impervious area of one ERU. So that many non-residential parcels are going to be one ERU as far as billing goes. There's another 1,364 parcels which had ERU values ranging from 2 to 628, which was our largest impervious area parcel. So the total number of ERUs that we received from those parcels that are greater than one ERU is 19,196. So as you recall, the Environmental Finance Center report recommended that we have a fee of about $40 an ERU. However, that was a standalone stormwater department. We have created this department as part of Public Works, and in all of our discussions so far, we've been talking about $20 per ERU. So we wanted to look and see how that is realistic and whether that's realistic for us. So what you have in your packages is we basically mapped out the capital improvements plan for the next five years, the proposed plan, including adding a line for street sweeping because street sweeping is a best management practice. We wanted to see how we could fund these capital improvements projects with the stormwater utility. So you'll see, we've looked at this a number of different ways, as if we're funding it in total, which is not necessarily realistic, or as if we're still going to try to get grants to fund some of the projects, which is, is very true. We've always decided to go after grants. And that some very large projects would use bonded debt, which is also an underlying assumption we'd like to keep. So the, the third table there that shows all the CIP projects that's deducted for bonded debt and grant assumptions shows an average fee per ERU over the course of those five years, and it averages out to about $23.45 per ERU. And as I said, that does include the street sweeping program being moved to this department as well as a budget to replace existing pipes and inlets that's above and beyond what we're doing right now. I'll jump back real quick. At that rate of $20 in ERU, which is the, the projection we've been talking about so far, that would equate to an annual revenue of about $600,000. It's $598,500. And you can see in your memo that's broken down. The residential parcels would be approximately $142,000 of that. The smaller non-residential parcels is about $73,000 of that annual revenue. And the larger, you know, that 1,300 larger non-residential parcels is, is the largest chunk of that, which is $383,920. So what's interesting, that, that sounds like a lot coming out of the smallest pool of parcels. However, when you look at that grouping, the average bill is about $281 for those non-residential parcels. There are some very large ones though, some large parcels with large impervious area.
Could, could you just, I'm sorry to interrupt your rhythm here. Could you tell us, the largest had 620 ERUs, is that what you said?
Yes.
Do you know what that is?
The center at Salisbury.
Figure.
Yes. By far the largest impervious area. This revenue projection does not include any possible credits. At this time, it's very difficult for us to project how many credit applications we'll get in the first year. So I think this time next year, when we're projecting the fees and the rates for the following year, we'll have a much better idea of how many credits we actually saw come in. So I, I think right now, based on the levels that we've looked at, the $20 per ERU is realistic. It, it would cover a lot of the CIP, what we've been looking at. It's, it's realistic in terms of the projects that we have on our plate already.
Well, so let's look at the, the third CIP table. Fund CIP, deduct bonded debt and grant assumptions. I mean, even in FY '16, the, the number, the fiscal year total in projects is a good bit higher.
It's higher.
Twenty, 25% or so, maybe more than, higher than the estimated revenue.
Yes.
What's the, what's the objective there? You know, how do we achieve the 759 number or really, really how do we make that 759 number fit the 585 number?
Sure. The biggest assumption there is, is the grants. And I, I think initially looking at, say fiscal year '16 is we're going to prioritize what, what we do in that year. So if we are able to set this fee, street sweeping is one easy thing that would transfer over. So that's a known cost. Some of the other ones, like the total maximum daily load compliance schedule, has been broken down for years into design and construction and grants. And that's the most nebulous one that we could, that we could size accordingly based on how much revenue we're getting.
Okay. I misunderstood. My, my assumption was that you're deducting projects that would be paid for through bonded debt and deducting projects that were paid for through grants. So this is inclusive of projects or pieces of projects that would be, be paid for with grants?
Well, what you're seeing there is the portion that would be paid by the stormwater utility.
Right.
So the total maximum daily load was half grant, half stormwater utility in our assumptions.
For some of those projects that are on that list, also are getting grants or bond. It's just not shown in reflecting the total. All that's left is the money that would be provided by the stormwater utility fee to make that project happen.
I'll flip down the list really quickly. The East Main Street Storm Drain is part of Main Street Master Plan, and that would be bonded debt is how that was projected to be paid for. Beaver Dam Creek Title Dam Repairs was also bonded debt with a small portion coming out of an MTBE lawsuit that we had. Germania Circle is, is bonded debt and grants. So that one came out completely.
In '16.
In '16, yes.
And then let, use the TMDL compliance schedule for a second.
Okay.
In the third chart, well, going up to the first table, it's shown as $400,000 with no, no grants or bonded debt. The, the second chart with grants deducted.
Yes.
It's cut in half to 200.
Exactly.
The third chart where you've also removed bonded debt, it's still, it's 200 because...
Exactly.
So, so, so that third chart, that is what I thought I was looking at. That third chart is removing the, the projects or parts of projects that are paid for with bonded debt and grants.
Right.
And still the number's higher than what we anticipate.
Yes. Yes, that's correct.
So which, if you're looking at a per-year basis, yes, you have, not only we're going to have the issue of trying to do all those projects at one time, but also we have to collect those fees and sort of get ahead of the curve a little bit too. Because July 1st, we're going to send the bill out, and then you're going to start collecting those fees. We're going to be doing some of those projects from July 1st on too.
Because you guys aren't busy enough.
No.
You needed to accomplish more in less time.
Well, for example, street sweeping will start day one on July 1st.
Right.
Give me a street sweep.
So, so what, I guess what the concern that I would have would be is, you know, yeah, by, by FY '18, that number might be in fact about what we're collecting by, you know, but in FY '16, FY '17, you know, it's unlikely that we'll collect all of that. So what's going to get pushed? How, how are you prioritizing?
Well, the only, one thing would be deciding whether the street sweeping, when to put the street sweeping into the, using the utility to do it, or do you maintain it as part of the general fund? Good option.
But, but that is what we would have to do is prioritize each year. And, and the TMDL one is the prime example where we need to start applying for grants so we could get more grants than we anticipate or, or less, and then that would help us prioritize the rest of the projects.
What is our success rate with grants?
Oh, we've been, done pretty well with going after them. The, in terms of overall grants, I mean, the bike grants, we've been very successful with. We've gotten several grants as far as the stormwater with the Market Street Project, this ESD project we're just doing. So there's an interest in doing that. The discussion we had had when we started getting involved in this was that we know with demand to meet these Chesapeake Bay limits, that if you get in early to get these grants, you have a better success rate because later on, as the pressure gets on you, more people are going to be competing with that. The other thing that we'll be able to offer with this is be able to say, we have a contributing piece. Because they always love when you get a grant and you double down on it, when you're putting in 50% or 10% or something. That improves your chances of getting grants. So the hope is that we can even improve on that grant success by having a, a local share that we can contribute.
Okay. And this is based on our assumptions on what percentage of the grants that we would get?
Yeah, like the TMDL, the, a big push, there's supposedly going to be a lot of EPA money and state money towards that. So the assumption we made was, was that it would be a 50/50 mix. 50, 50% local share, 50% coming from grants.
In our early discussions also, we had talked about mitigation by the large ERUs. Possible mitigation which would then reduce their... Has any of those assumptions been made in, in, in these calculations in terms of revenue?
No, this, like, like the credit program, the project funds or contribution of money towards projects is not accounted for because we have no idea what that could be. Now, just as a, as a side on, possibly is that TMDL money could be used for those type of projects. So if somebody comes and says, we want to do this project and, and work in terms of reducing our stormwater load, that would qualify potentially as a maximum load reduction project. So you could be using that money towards those type of projects.
Take the largest ERU, which is the mall. What would be the mitigation that would allow them to come down to a point where there's nothing? Would there be?
That would be a pretty good stretch. One of the things they would probably look at is there's that large stormwater basin that's back there, trying to convert that. Or maybe the, from an evaluation in terms of parking lot area, that they're not maximizing their use of parking lots, then they could come back and propose having grass buffer strips or landscape strips to try to filter off that runoff and kind of look at things that way. But I don't think you're going to get to a point where they're going to not have any impact because you're just from sheer amount of impervious area.
Which brings my next concern. Let's go to the manufacturing, which is something that we're trying to get in and retain. Manufacturing companies and corporations usually look for a two and a half to three year payout on investment. Environmental investment is a high priority for a lot of those companies. However, it would be nice to get an idea of what it's going to take to mitigate so that they can see if there's a return on investment in paying the fee, because if you pay the fee, you keep paying the fee.
Right.
If you can mitigate, it's, it's better for us because it takes care of a portion of our issue. And it's better for them because they don't have this ongoing fee. That's going to, that's going to be a key for us in the future to bring new businesses, especially large manufacturing businesses into the area. And that's a main concern of mine.
Yep. And it will, they will do that cost analysis to decide, is it, with the money that we would put in, the return we would get by reducing the fee, what, what that is. It may be easier. I know with the city of Rockville, when we looked at them, they didn't get a lot of, too much of an interest in, in a lot of industries to try to do that because it was easier to pay the fee. There wasn't much of a return on it. Our main issue with these non-residential properties is going to be trying to meet our reductions in stormwater by getting involved with some of these private property owners because we can't meet them just in taking care of the public right of way. There's a lot of impervious areas privately controlled, and we have to be somehow working creative ways to try to get their interest in doing that. And that's where we...
We need to, that has to be a high priority for us.
Exactly. So the, you're, you're looking at that point where the business is looking at the return point, and we're looking at what we got put into the thing to make it work. And that's where the negotiations are going to take place.
And we've created the structure for that to happen by creating the, both the credit program and the grant program. However, if the incentive isn't there, not that I would suggest artificially raising a, a fee which would, you know, just to be able to lower it and create that incentive, but you're right, finding those partnerships, really on a voluntary basis is going to be the way to, you know, fund those partnerships on a voluntary basis.
And, and wasn't this, there's two ways of looking at it. You either raise the fee to make it more cost effective return, or you increase the incentive to, by bringing their costs down slightly to get that thing to work. See, there's two ways to approach a thing. And we, we have a job that we've got to do to meet our state mandates to get these water cleaned up. So there's an incentive on our part to try to get those public-private partnerships to work.
Question. In the, in the 7,094 number, does that include the, the multifamily rooms too?
Uh, yes, it does. Yes. Uh, well, actually, it's single family, the 7,094 is single-family residential. So it would, it would not be apartments or condominiums, would be in non-single-family. So they're, they're coming into the other...
They're coming in a non-single-family residential.
Yes. Yeah, those...
So they're, they're in the group, the second group?
They're in the second group. That 7,000 is, is strictly single-family. Yes. That's right.
I have another question if I could.
Yes, Mr. Y.
Just from experience, I just want to make sure that in the capital plans that we have that are rolled out over the number of years, has there been an inflation point, inflation rate put into those numbers to make sure that we don't have to come back with a amendment to the...
We do put inflation factors in our capital improvement plan requests every year, and we update them annually. So we, we would expect that each year when we're looking at the stormwater fee, we'd be giving you the new capital improvement plan tables, which I think we both feel like as we're getting this revenue coming in and we're able to hire some consultants and help us start designing these projects, we'll have a much better feel of how we can spend the money going forward. But, but we do factor that in, and you'll see that in, in our numbers year after year that they're, they're sneaking up each year.
The trick is going to be, obviously, when you get down to it and you have the money that you have available, to match it up and figure out what gets bumped because what gets bumped is hopefully the same thing you planned on, the same rate of inflation that you planned on, you know, in, in the design, so.
Right. Agree.
So I, I think what we're learning here is, you know, one, we really do need to figure out our strategy for voluntary partnerships with private property owners. Two, the proposed fee is in line with the estimated costs that we expect to have this year. And three, really not going to know much until the end of this year. We're going to learn a lot, I assume, this year.
That's how we feel. We're going to learn a lot this year, and we'll have a much better idea. As Mike said, you, you don't want the fee to be too low, that it's not, there's no incentive there, but we don't want to artificially raise it. So I think we'll see as this year's going on what sort of feedback we're getting.
Okay.
I have one more.
Yeah.
This, I guess this is my night for questions. Even though it's a very small amount, I, I think from, I've gotten questions from, especially the seniors in the area. Is there any mitigation that they can do for, to get a, a one ERU erased?
There was the hardship exemption.
There's, yeah, the hardship exemption, hardship exemptions in place for them to not have to pay the fee. But we didn't set it up where the, like a rain barrel or something like that was there.
Yeah, there's no, there's no mitigation for that.
Because it's sort of at that minimum. Now, we were going to work to have a grants for people to put those in to offset those costs of doing it, but we had to sort of set them at the minimalist type rate in order to get that trip.
So there is no mitigation currently unless it's associated with a future grant to reduce, like, like the rain barrel project? Okay.
Not, not on a property that is one ERU.
Correct.
Yes, correct.
Yeah. Because it does, it, $20 doesn't seem like a lot, but to some of the seniors, it's a lot.
But they, and then a lot of them also live in the senior housing that you all had put in the non-residential. And it's just, and if they get it, charge each unit. Is each unit going to be charged?
It would be divided up, I guess however the landlord divides it up, but it, yeah, so it, it should be passed on to each unit.
So they'll pass it on, yeah, they'll pass it at $20.
One of the issues with that is that you have common areas associated with those facilities, common parking and parking lots that'll have to be figured into the overall fee in terms of how to do that. So how, I know we had a discussion when we were passing the ordinance, how do you make sure that it doesn't, and there's no real way to be able to do that, fortunately.
We, we, we have to hope that there's no taking advantage of, you know, low income and senior residents.
Some seniors don't have cars. So how would you justify paying, than paying the fee to go with the car?
Well, they're using common areas such as sidewalks. There's the area, the roof area that they live in. They have visitors that come with their car. The, probably, what we're trying to do is we account for all the impervious area.
Okay.
Right. So would your hope in bringing this forward be to set the rate by ordinance after, at the same time we set the water and sewer rate, or do you want to bring... the same time we set the water and sewer rate, or do you want to bring this forward in a separate ordinance now?
We would like to get it going because with our schedule that we had posted with you in the discussions, we were looking at the first reading of the fee ordinance on March 9th, March 23rd, the second reading, and then being able to do the sample bills to all the properties greater than one ERU on April 20th.
And I only ask because there wasn't a, there wasn't a draft ordinance, I believe, with, submitted with this packet, but I know it's relatively straightforward than that. Well, then I would ask, is there council consensus to bring the rate as proposed forward to legislative session?
Yes.
All right. We look forward to seeing that.
Thank you.
Whatever timeline is achievable for the administration. All right. So next item on our agenda is the recreational trails grant, Salisbury rowing and kayak water access project.
Yes, this is a, a project that we were working with, with Department of Natural Resources. We had been talking to them about trying to create some better access for kayak facilities because right now it's a lot more difficult for them to get a kayak launch because you have your peers sitting higher. Most people would have to use a boat ramp and it's not as convenient for doing that. They made us aware of state highway administration grants that are encouraging recreational type activities. There's actually a change in the law now if state highway builds a bridge across a river, typically they'll have layout areas for the contractors at the water's edge to build the bridge. They now have to preserve those areas for public access for the public because of the concerns with a lot of water access being bought from private property. So that kind of brought DNR into the mix and they encouraged us to apply for a grant for these kayak water access project. Along that line, there was also interest in the possibility of not only kayaks, but having rowing clubs or rowing organization using shells, you know, one man up to eight in terms of how competitive they get and being able to provide for that type of, of activity as well. Because that's been kind of picking up over Easton and New Cambridge with these rowing activities. So what we did was we put together a grant request to the state highway administration and had sort of a layout you see in the packet there. Basically utilizes a floating dock that extends out and there's a place for a person to walk out and place his kayak on sort of a, a ramp and then he can safely get in the kayak, get stable with it, and then slide off this into the water rather than trying to get himself into the kayak while it's floating and bobbing in the water. So it's a great way for people in terms of beginners even being able to get involved in, in this recreational sport. And in addition to that, there's a longer platform to allow rowing shells to be brought out and then set in the water for this activity to occur. So the grant that we applied for was the 40,000 to make that happen in terms of mowing those facilities and getting them set in. The location of that is towards the downstream end of the marina, so it doesn't impact the existing slips. You can see the dimensions there to allow the boats to continue to get out. And it also lines up with that end where the parking lot that's existing there could be utilized if we get funding for a boathouse as well as using kayak storage facilities. We're kind of looking towards is the point where somebody gets done with the, at work the end of the day, can drive over to the marina, park his car, he's got his kayak on a storage rack in a secure area, pulls it off, goes and does his, his laps with his kayak and can go back. And he doesn't have that, well, like a drag it out of the garage, get it on top of the truck, the car, drive over and do the same thing. So it's going to encourage them, that kind of activity. So that's the basis of what we went after with that grant. DNR will be helping us with the, not only refining the design, putting the specifications together for the purchase of the dock. So they'll be providing the technical assistance. We'll be providing some in-kind labor in terms of what we can do in terms of setup and acquiring this. So what we need is to execute a memorandum of understanding with state highway for the grant funds to be dispersed and that's a detachment in there.
So I, I have one kind of technical layout question and then a couple of timing questions. The layout question is in the site plan that shows the, the location of the floating dock. It shows the distance from the dock to the, the, the last sort of piers in a row on the, the last set of boat slips to the, to the southwest as 55.3 feet. My only question is looking at the 50 foot boats there, is that, or that's shown in the, in the image, is that enough distance for those boats to get out of there and turn without?
It generally allow for a, a length of the boat beyond the last.
That's, that's all that's needed?
Yeah, most of these big boats have twin screws, so they pivot.
Fancy.
They can do a 360.
On a dime?
Yeah.
On the center point?
Yeah.
These are the ones that are like here.
The ones, the ones shown?
Well, yeah.
Yeah. So if you, if you looked at the other piers on the other side, you sort of see the same thing. There's about that gap space between both piers about the same.
Okay, okay. The, the other questions I had relate to timing. Six or eight months ago, council heard the request for reallocation of CDA bonds from 2003 and I know we've, we've been looking at, and I'm not asking you for an answer on those because I know that's not your department, but we, we've been looking at, at those and I know that they are, that process is ongoing, Mr. Corddry, Mr. Stevenson has updated us that Mr. Cordry is working on those. But my question is, a portion of the, the reallocation of those bonds was for a port, some cosmetic work, signage, landscaping at this site. We also know that there's the, the Fitzwater Pump Street Station and the lifting of that station out of Fitzwater Street and onto this property and then the, the work that would go to repair the street after that. I'm just wondering, how do these, how do all of these kind of align? Can you speak to sort of the broad brushstrokes, timing of those three projects?
Yeah, the CDA money for the, I'll call them the site enhancements, which was signage both at the street level and at the building to better demarcate the marina facility, landscape trees on the entrance road coming in and paving of the entrance road and some decorative fencing. We're going to coordinate with River.
River's edge.
Yeah, so all that stuff, as soon as that money's available, we've actually got quotes done, we'll probably have to re-quote them because the time went by, but ready to go. And then as far as the paving, it's just a matter of waiting for the warmer weather when you get our contractors going. So that will probably move the quickest. With the, the next quickest thing will be the, and these are all can be independently done, would be the kayak launch because of the fact that we'll have to go through getting the design approved, we have to get a permit for that facility in the water with the orientation we've got, we'll probably have to drive a few piles to anchor that floating dock. So we have to go through that permitting process, then we have to get the design approved by the funding agency and follow the proper federal requirements and all that stuff. So that'll be the next thing going. And then the third one that's kind of out there is the, the boathouse, but we've got to wait till we get the grant. We've got to, once we get the grant, then we can try to put, build a schedule around that. And that grant application has been made for that boathouse. We've also got a little mini grant of $5,000, which we've gotten set aside by DNR to cover some of the extraneous costs that we may get into, the, the dock work and things like that.
Okay.
So that's out there too.
That mini grant was provided by DNR.
Yeah, that's actually what started the ball rolling, we sort of looked for that and then they, they came out and looked at this thing and said, oh, by the way, you can go up to this other grant.
And the pump station's the longest piece of construction in there. We have 95% plans, they've been submitted to MDE for our construction permit, so we're in good shape plan wise. We hope to have that permit this month, which would enable us to go out and advertise for bids in March. If that goes well, then hopefully we'd be awarding a contract in May, starting construction by June. And that's a, a good year, maybe year and a half construction project. So, so that would be probably the last thing to get started and the longest to be under construction. But they are independent, as Mike said.
Okay.
And we heard back this morning, coincidentally from bond council, that the CDA's bond council would not release those proceeds, so we're going to have to advance a piece of legislation and Mr. Aiders is working on getting that together to get it in front of council as soon as possible.
So meaning they would not release them without legislative authority to release?
Paid it off, yes.
Okay. Well, all right. Mr. Graut, do you have a question? I'll allow a question if you want to come up to the microphone.
John Graut, I'm a kayaker and I'm really excited about what you're, you're saying there. I've been wishing the county to do the same thing and we've met with DNR some time ago and hopefully putting some kayak launches along the rivers. Have you considered putting any of these in some of the ponds that are in the city? Because they would be, I know people use them, but sometimes it's tough to get, get them in there.
I mean, that's something that we haven't really looked into yet, but it's an interest in terms of the groups and probably give us a good read.
Yeah.
I think as a result of doing this project, we're probably going to get a good association with kayakers and get some back and forth as far as future interest in terms, not only on the river, but I think there's other legs of the river where there was some interest. But the ponds is, is something that could certainly.
Well, I know we went down, Gary Mackes and I and John Hall went down to Riverside Drive over Tote and Tank and talked about one there and one up at Sharp Town, which would be further away, but it's, you know, they're, they're talking, they were, and we'll see what happens now with some changes, but it would be great to have these because if you could go from one to the other, pull out and take your, your car. That's great that you're doing it, you're like happy. The ponds would be great also.
One question.
Yes, Mr. Y.
I guess it's a two parter. Are there any lighting replacements or enhancements that are going to take place at this site?
At this point, we hadn't looked at anything. I think we've got the lighting right there along the, the dock area. This, it could be something that could be looked at once we got, are you thinking of the entrance?
Well, I'm thinking of the lighting being sufficient to accommodate the people who are docking their, you know, their, their kayaks after dark.
Oh, okay, at the dock area.
Yeah.
That, that would something we could easily accommodate with the existing lights there, maybe boost in the wattage. We wouldn't want to bring it down onto the floating dock.
No, no, I understand that.
But one of the things we're, from a lighting perspective, we're trying to do is with our pedestal replacement on the main docks, the lighting needs to be done there with those pedestals and using that. So that's part of it. And then you have those light posts that run along the shoreline, call them. But that's certainly something we can evaluate as, as it goes on.
Is that a project that appears in this FY16 CIP pedestal replacement? All right, other questions? All right, is there council consensus to move this grant agreement forward or the MOU?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike and Amanda.
Thanks for the work.
The next item on our agenda is the land donation for the Henry S. Parker Athletic Complex to Waukesha County. This is being reintroduced or brought back to us for formal action. We sent a letter to the county essentially offering the land. They, they actually adopted, they took formal action, accepting the land, although it has not been formally sent to them or offered to them. But we also sent a letter and, and Mr. Stevenson, I'll, I'll let you begin, but at some point I'd like to remind everyone of the points in our letter that council agreed to and council sent forward.
Yeah, and in fact, I just emailed you all a copy of that letter, each member of the council, if you didn't have it before. The representatives from the Waukesha County Council have been in to speak with the Salisbury City Council before. City clerk provided minutes from the July 7th meeting when they came in and then additional minutes. Just in, in brief, Waukesha County seeking a donation, donation of land of 34.94 acres from the city of Salisbury to expand the Henry Parker Athletic Complex. Expansion of the facility will position the county to retain, grow and attract new events, amateur sports tournaments and other local, and will help support the local economy. They, they provided a good deal of numbers and I'll, I'll spare the council from going through all that again because you've heard it, but they did say that when they were last in, that the state of Maryland was committed to this project and would commit $1 million to the expansion and that it was in the FY15 budget and that the county council would do the same. And then within your packet, there are a couple of aerials and then the delineation of the property that would be donated. From the July 7th work session, there were several points that were brought out. Points of discussion included the additional need for soccer, lacrosse and softball fields. Again, the county had secured $1 million from the state and that Waukesha County expects $10 million in economic activity over the next four years. It does present some traffic challenges, however, that would be addressed at the time. Easements would be required, funds are included in the grant for infrastructure for restrooms and snack stands. Possibility of leasing rather than donating the land to the, the, the city council talked about this, leasing rather than donating. The next steps in the process would be for the county's law office to meet with Mr. Tillman and I guess at some point I'll ask Mark to get us up to speed on that. Scenic Drive will not be altered, there would be little, there's little residential concern or immediate concern in the area. Waukesha County was to perform a traffic study, what was the actual value of the land, so on and so forth. And then council came back and then provided additional information on September 2nd and that ultimately resulted in the council president's letter to the city council laying out those five conditions that needed to be met. Mark, can you talk to us about what exchanges you've had, if any, with Mr. Baker?
Uh, yeah, he actually has been out of the office a little bit and I, I've tried to communicate with him. They've actually sent me a deed at my request, but the deed would provide for a donation of a greater acreage than has previously been discussed, so I was a little concerned about that.
To what extent greater?
Like twice as much. Okay. I mean, the, the description of the property here is 62.74 acres, so. And, and I haven't seen an actual plat yet. I've seen the diagrams that are in here, but I would have to go over whatever plat is out there, you know, line by line, making sure that we're not giving away any more than we intend to give away.
No, it was 34.
Thirty, 34.94, so 35 acres.
Yeah, the, the legal description in the draft deed that I received says 62.74 acres, so.
How much was that?
62.74 acres. So I, I, obviously there's somewhat of a disconnect here, so.
If they did what? If they included what they already have?
You know, I, all I've seen as far as, is this deed, because I was told that the county was preparing the deed for our consideration and then I've seen these drawings, but I haven't seen any specific plat yet that's been drawn of what the proposed. I'm wondering if they included, because that's about half of what, in other words, I'm wondering if they included to refile the deed with these, what they already own.
With what they own?
Yeah. That would almost make sense. But I don't know, I just can't. I'm just saying that how, this number is wrong.
But you haven't seen a deed plat to go along with it?
No, no one's provided me with a plat and that's really what I need to do to look at it and make sure that what we're giving, if anything, matches exactly what you intend to give. I think this needs more work.
Yeah, so, I, I mean, I can already tell you that, looking just at point one of our letter, work has not continued between the county and our other party to this agreement. Just a reminder, I'm going to read these off just so, Tom, I didn't see your email, so I'm going to read these into the record. After careful consideration on September 2nd, 2014, city council unanimously reached consensus to the following stipulations prior to the transfer of property to Waukesha County. One, execution of a city, county and eastern shore international mountain biking association One, execution of a city, county and Eastern Shore International Mountain Biking Association MOU to open new mountain biking trails on the city-owned property on Naylor Mill Road to the south and west of the proposed fields. This MOU should empower Asimba with the responsibility for trail maintenance and management. Having spoken with Asimba representatives, they've had no further conversations at all with the county since the transition in their government. So, I mean, they're not making progress on that one.
Could I add to that?
Yeah, please.
We, I talked to the county executive in the hallway last week and he asked me where we were on this and I said, well, actually, it's your task to execute. But I did talk to Mr. Baker's office. They've, let me make sure I get this right, Asimba crafted the MOU. They sent that to Mr. Baker, he sent it back to them for comment, so it's with them now, but it's stalled.
Okay.
Nothing beyond that.
That's not how they see it, but.
Right.
Okay.
So with the county council, did you say?
No, with the.
Back with Asimba.
Asimba.
Oh, okay.
Okay, that's fine. And actually, Mr. Perry, we're standing here, we're sitting here talking about you while you're out of the room. Would you mind coming to the microphone?
Sure.
Thank you.
I looked at the agenda and it said six o'clock, so I thought I had time.
We're ahead of schedule, we apologize. So the discussion we're having right now is the status of the MOU that you and I have talked about briefly, but also.
Between Wycomico County and Eastern Shore IMBA?
Yes. And could you provide us an update on the status of that agreement?
Yes. There wasn't much communication for a while between Wycomico County and Eastern Shore IMBA, and then there was a sudden push to get it done toward the end of the year. So we put together an MOU based on the one that we have with the city of Salisbury and the trails. We have MOUs with other areas, but this one fit the best. So I emailed that to Mr. Mackes and it was returned, I'd say it was about two to three weeks with a lot of changes. And the one change that we could not meet was they asked for us to provide insurance for anyone who might venture onto the trails on a bicycle. We can't do that, we've never done that, we provide insurance for our workers, anyone who might be raking or anything, fixing up trails, and that's what we do. Otherwise, the changes were decent, we could live by most of them. And then we never heard back from them and then there was a change in some elections and things.
Inconsistent with my report then, so, yeah.
Sorry.
Sorry about that.
No, 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 that's okay. I think, I think, you know, what I'm hearing though is that we have something of a draft MOU.
Yes.
That has been seen by both the county and Eastern Shore IMBA.
Yes.
Forgive me, I keep calling it Asimba.
It's okay, some people do that, it's fine. I just call Eastern Shore chapter of IMBA. It works, it's fine.
So I think what we'd wanna do is to see that draft and to ensure that the agreement between the city and Eastern Shore IMBA, at this stage, while the city owns the property, is something that both the city and Eastern Shore IMBA are comfortable with and that it is paralleled by the county Eastern Shore IMBA agreement. Essentially the same thing, but the party, the city and county change. In order to meet this requirement that council has placed on any agreement. So at this stage of the game, I think, you know, we could, the city and Eastern Shore IMBA could be negotiating.
We could, we could open up a memorandum of understanding and possibly, we discussed via email, a volunteer service agreement, they're similar, for what's there now. And that way, whether land is shuffled to this group or that group and in the future, if they want a memorandum of understanding for whatever trails remain out there, yeah, we would be covered. So I think that we could get something together for, because there is a sign on the left. On the right, it says, Henry S. Parker Stadium, on the left it says, Naylor Mill Park, city of Salisbury, Naylor Mill Park. So it's sort of an existing park. There is a sign out there and we could do something based on that.
Okay.
Right?
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. The second item is, as part of the county surveying, engineering and design process, the county will accept responsibility for determining the most ecologically responsible, sustainable and structurally logical site for future crossing of the Connolly Mill Branch. You know, the indications from their planner were that they could meet this requirement, but again, not having heard back, I'm not sure what the status of that request is or that requirement is. Secondly, as part of the county's design and engineering process, the county will document and wear practical preserve existing trails along the steep slopes to the north and west of the proposed fields. Same issue, as part of the county's design process, older and significant trees will be preserved where possible and residual debris from site development and clearing shall not be left on existing trails. I think we need a response from the Department of Recreation and Parks to know where we are on the status of this agreement, potential agreement.
I can reach out to Mr. Strasburg if you like.
I think that'd be great and I'd also like to see, I think we need to see the agreement between the city and Eastern Shore IMBA and the agreement between county and Eastern Shore IMBA drafted and in a state that both parties are, all three parties are comfortable with before item number one is going to be deemed acceptable. Or met, excuse me.
With, with regard to the proposed deed, there's really no restriction on the property other than it will be, let's see, should, that they will not convert the use of land to any use other than public outdoor recreation and open space use without the prior written approval of the Secretary of National, Natural Resources and the Secretary of the Department of State Planning. There's no requirement for what the city might want. And then it also says that approval shall not be granted unless the applicant replaces the project or facility with property of at least equivalent area and equivalent open space value. And that doesn't seem to really protect what the city wants protected, in my opinion.
No. So I would say that in addition to those points, all of these points need to appear in the deed. And additionally, I would say there's another item that's missing here. I think there needs to be a clause where the land would revert to us if the county doesn't, doesn't meet its, doesn't execute the project. We want it back. So I'd say that needs to appear in there personally.
No disagreement for me.
Okay. Mr. Graut, did you have?
Sorry, I came here for a totally other reason that I haven't spoken on and this came up. One of the things that strikes me on this particular property is that all the discussion is going on about what's going on above ground, the roads and the par, the ballfields and stuff. What the property was bought for, or not was got for, with my understanding was to protect the wellhead of the aquifer. And I haven't heard that discussed. And that, to me, is the most crucial thing that needs to be really looked into seriously. There's a lot of material online, all you need to do is start Googling and you find tons of information on this particular site. And what you find, among other, many, many other things, is that this aquifer, which is probably worth billions of dollars over time to the city of Salisbury in fresh water, very, very good quality water, is that it's a very strange, aquifer's work, as you know, they're underground rivers, but not only do they go this way, they go this way. And at this particular point in this particular aquifer, which is a very, very wonderful watered aquifer, it not only narrows, but it comes near the surface. And when Pete Cooper, I think, found it, or that it was absolutely a bonanza of water for the city of Salisbury. Very shallow, very good quality water flowing near the surface and in huge quantities because it narrows at this point. The other thing about this particular part of the aquifer is unconfined, which means that there's no protective layer of clay above it, so that anything that's on the surface is gonna go directly into it and it's near the surface. It's the water supply of Salisbury. If it gets compromised, there's big trouble, as we know from where the pond got, or the west side of the county. I would really recommend that you look very, very seriously at what you're playing with here. That forest is acting as the clay, so what clay would do is a confining thing of a sort, protecting the top of that aquifer, which is so close to the surface at that point. As I say, there's tons of material, tons, but there's a great amount of material on it, you start Googling it and you find geological reports from the state, from the feds, from the water supply, all over, and then you see what you're getting from it. So I know this is maybe late in the game, but there is another parcel that I understand is right contiguous with this, that is in bankruptcy right now, a farm, right? It could be the ballfields and I support the ballfields certainly. But it's not that we have no alternative. Maybe it costs a little bit more, but maybe it won't either. Just, just ask you to really look what's below the surface as well as what's on top and what the value of that aquifer is, so, just thanks.
Mr. Graut, if you could, just one second, you know, in conversations about this, there have been discussions about another parcel similar in characteristics and adjacent, but I'm not sure that I know where that is. Do you happen to know where that is?
My understanding, and this is secondhand, is that it's a sod farm that is in the back, I would say the back, further back into the, and it's not forested, so you wouldn't be cutting down a lot of trees that are right now protecting this right over the, I don't know what, how far the aquifer goes into that section.
Yes.
But it's a sod farm in the back there that is, that's what I understand.
We have sod farms on both sides of this, of this parcel. I'm assuming though that it's the one farther back.
That was my understanding, I didn't know there were two of them. And again, that's what I, I'm not certain of this, I heard this secondhand sometime.
The open space property. We, if I might interject, we had a rather extensive discussion about protecting the aquifer and I, you know, presented that early on and Mr. Molds, you had comments to make about it at the time, did you not? I think that, you know, we talked about the rolling nature of the topography there and whether or not what we were going to be doing would protect that aquifer. And I think when, when all was said and done, I think there's going to be minimal disruption of, of the terrain there. And I think what's gonna happen is going, there's gonna be a lot of soil moved to the site, which will increase the depth of the filtration media. As for the trees being removed, I have other things to say about that, but I'd like to hear that from you again, Mr. Molds, about the removal of the trees and the root structure that, that is down there and is really benefiting the water quality.
Well, there's, the one thing we looked at in terms of, from a code standpoint, whether it was allowable in accordance with the code and the proposed use with the, I believe it was the conservation district, was that it was an allowed use. So the codes that the city had is more in line with industrial type uses in the paleo zone that we're trying to protect. The use of a recreational facility would be conformant, so we didn't have an objection to the type of use that was proposed in that area. Again, the whole tree thing is sort of another preservation issue from a tree standpoint, but we didn't see that in terms of necessarily an impact on the aquifer, in terms of that. Does that answer your question?
Mostly, yes.
Okay.
We also talked about, once that, if you wanna say it cleared, once, once the fields are installed, about the use of chemicals on the turf there, which is gonna be fairly extensive to keep that turf in good condition.
Yeah, the state now has very specific regulations through the cleanup of the Chesapeake Bay for the application of commercial fertilizers. So there's a lot more restrictions that will have to be met in order to minimize overapplying fertilizers on, on these properties now. So that will come into play from a regulatory standpoint.
And is the county prepared to do that, to stick with those requirements?
Well, they'll be, that'll be through their licensing through the state of Maryland, so they'll have to deal with the state in those regards.
Okay.
In terms of compliance.
And the last thing I wanted to say is about the trees again, and this is not to get off track, but I mentioned before that when those trees are harvested, well, actually, I think the way it'll go is that the county will get the property and the county will get a contractor and the contractor will clear the land. And then the contractor takes whatever profit there is from the trees. Now, I think that what we should do is really think about maybe encouraging the county to get an RFP for tree removal, so that the county can garner a little bit of money from the process itself, rather than giving it all to the contractor. Cause that'd be a gravy thing for the contractor, once, once they sell that timber. And there's timber in there that is, well, it's between 80 and 120 years old and much of it is furniture grade quality. So this can be sold at, I don't know, at least a couple dollars a foot. And we're talking some change here. So I wonder if we could pass that along to the county, that they may think about that.
I think during our discussion, we had talked about the similar things and I remember them saying it very, very clearly, that it was not a clearing process, it's gonna be a selective process, which makes it more difficult for someone to make a lot of money on the trees.
Okay.
And it's, cause they're gonna go and they're gonna only take the trees that are absolutely necessary to fit the fields in. So it's not a clearing, it's a selective process.
Okay. Here's, here's my thought on moving forward. We have questions as to the status of the five stipulations that council stated. We have questions as to the content of the deed. And really, I have what I think is the most fundamental question here, is this project actually moving forward? There's a claim that the state is providing a million dollars for this project, there's the claim that the county will match that. I'd be curious to know from the county's administration, are they in fact matching that? Is that shown in the FY16 budget? I don't think that budget's been delivered to county council, but either shortly in advance of that delivery or at the time of delivery, we can have that question answered. So I'd like to know, to get an update on all of those items before city council considers whether or not to move forward on this project, especially given environmental and current user questions that we have, so.
As far as action items for staff, it was a copy of the MOU, current MOU with the city, a copy of the proposed MOU with the county. Response from the county is with regard to the stipulations and then check to see if that $1 million commitment is in their budget.
I think whether or not that's in the budget, whether or not the million dollars from the state was ever in the budget, in the state's budget, or whether or not that was in Governor Hogan's budget this year. And also, you know, the various questions, I mean, really, all of them are subservient to the budget question, all, all the other questions. But, but I mean, I'd like to know the various questions that we had related to the deed, both the acreage, the content, are stipulations appearing in the deed or not appearing in the deed? I think all of those questions need to be answered.
And I would just add to that, that I would not like to spend any more of our money on this until we find out whether it is a go or not, in any way, shape or form.
Agreed.
And to be sure that, you know, if this does not go, go forth by X amount of time, that the property reverts to the city and I'd like that to be at the county's expense, not the city's.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Agreed. Okay, so is there council consensus to table this item until we get answers to those questions?
Yes.
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 Thank you all. Next item on our agenda is the charter and code changes. This is a historical item in that it has been around for a very long time with several recommended changes and updates that have existed over time. Some of them editorial, others pretty significant. Mr. Stevenson and I have talked about how to bring this to council, given that there are many items which would require a lot of action on our part. And the recommendation is that we handle it in, you know, kind of bite-sized chunks. So we'll, we'll take a bite today and we'll have some bites in the future. So with that, Mr. Stevenson, I'm gonna hand it over to you.
Okay, thank you. As the council president said, it's been some time that we've been trying to get these issues before you. In fact, they go back to the Mr. Pick days, so we're gonna, we're gonna do it a little bit at a time, start with the city charter, starting, decided to start with Article II because there were no initial comments from staff regarding Article I, but I did pick up on something today when I was reading. today when I was reviewing this that we might want to, to reconsider. So, I'll, I'll get us through this as quickly as I can. Um, if you'll turn to, um, the submittal, of course, there's the cover memo, and then I'll start with, of course, the first one's going to be kind of confusing. Um, Article Two, uh, the city council, SC two dash one, if everybody sees that. Um, I talked with, uh, Ms. Nichols this morning before she left, uh, for an event this afternoon with her daughter. And what was being requested here was that, um, and I guess there was a reference in the charter at the time that said a councilman holding office on January first nineteen fifty, nineteen fifty-two shall continue to hold office and that that, uh, language was outdated and should be removed. And in fact, it, it actually already has, um, when the, um, charter was changed to delineate the, um, current districts.
That was removed.
That, that was removed. So, that, so that's taken care of, and it actually reads that way. So, that one's really sort of a done deal, but we're, we may have to circle back to that one in, in just a little bit, so we can fix that. So, um, if we get, go to, um, SC two dash two qualifications, um, what's being addressed here is this language that says, uh, council member shall, shall have resided in Salisbury for at least one year immediately preceding their election, and a council member or, or council members from District One and Two. Um, that's not reflected in here, uh, in terms of the notes, but reading through that in preparation for the discussion, that would need to be changed, because as you know, we now have five districts. So, I, I made a note of the fact that, that that portion would need to be changed. And it says, uh, says, shall reside in the boundaries of the district for which they are to be elected, so on and so forth. And then the very last sentence there, and this is what the city clerk had pointed out some time ago, it says, the Board of Supervisors of Election, that's old language, and they are recommending that, that be changed to say the Salisbury Election Board.
So, so for, for something like that, and for something like, um, the ensuring that there is a parallel between the actual number of districts we have today and language that references the old, um, District One and District Two, um, Mr. Tillman, is there a, is there a faster and easier way to update these things? I mean, you know, just changing Board of Supervisors of Elections to, you know, Salisbury Election Board, um, is there, is there a faster?
With regard to a charter change, we literally have to just go line by line and get it done. Yeah. I mean, we can, we can lump these things together if they're, you know, I mean, like we can deal with election board matters all at the same time and.
Right.
We're, we're supposed to stick with one subject generally, um, but.
And that's why I thought maybe we would just go through this article by article and then clean these things up that way and then come back with one piece.
You're going to have to do multiple changes to, to accomplish it, but, you know.
You can put a line by line.
Okay.
It would be nice if it was just a simple, a simple change.
I think, I think then for purposes of, of what we're accomplishing by going through this right now, um, it makes sense to me if we, uh, get council consensus, uh, for whether or not there is, you know, a debate or opposition or, you know, I, I'd like us to know what is going to be drafted, let's say by Mr. Tillman's office, into the, uh, the changes that will come back in a formal, you know, charter change, uh, in a formal resolution, changing the charter, um, so that we're, we're using this time to figure out the language and be done with it and move on. Um, so, just going item by item for the moment, uh, the references to, uh, districts, um, one and two, uh, and the reference to council members, in other words, there being multiple representatives in one district, um, is there any opposition or discomfort to updating that?
No.
Okay. Um, the reference to Board of Supervisors of Elections and updating that, any issues?
No.
Okay, all right.
And, and part of, uh, SC two dash one would have been cleaned up and corrected anyway when you passed Resolution twenty-four forty-three, which created the five districts. So, we can just pull that language out of there and move it right into SC two dash one. So, some of them are, you know, pretty straightforward, but they'll, they'll get a little bit more complicated. So, we're, we're okay on those issues.
Yes.
Um, moving through, and forgive me, these pages are, are not numbered and they should be, uh, if I could get you to SC two dash twelve, and it's the very bottom of the next couple of pages, it's veto.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and then that really starts on the next page. Mr. Council President, did you want me to read all of this into the record or, I mean, I'm okay with it, but some of it's going to get a little lengthy when we get to referendum, for example.
No, you don't need to read it into the record, but if you could just explain the issue and describe the proposed solution.
Well, there, there are three, um, charter changes that are being proposed tonight, and they're going to be more, um, difficult in terms of figuring out, figuring out exactly what the improvement is going to be. So, I, I would like to lump together, if I could, and perhaps return to it, SC two dash twelve veto, um, SC two dash fifteen general powers, and SC two dash sixteen referendum for one final discussion at the end, if there's no objection from council, and we can move then to SC two dash thirteen.
Okay.
Okay. Um, here it simply says that since ordinance has not been filed in a book or books kept for that purpose, uh, and it said, when ordinance is passed, it should be permanently filed with the clerk in a book or book kept for the purpose, um, it should say, just say permanently filed.
Okay.
That's easy.
Is any opposition to that?
No.
Okay.
And then in SC two dash fourteen, we should change the reference to the people's court to district court. And I made a note to ask Mr. Tillman, um, should we also reference, uh, mark the circuit court there? If an ordinance is passed, it has to go to the district court, not to the people's court. But I would think it would go to the circuit court as well.
Um, I'd have to look at that, because I, I guess it's theoretically possible, someone could appeal to the circuit court. I mean, but it's, it's going to start in the, in the district court, but yes.
But you could have, if you passed an ordinance that impacted the historic district commission, the.
You could have an appeal at the circuit court.
The appeals at circuit court, so it would need to be on file there. So, that change would just be district and circuit court. So, that would be fairly straightforward. So, then.
Any, any opposition?
Okay. Okay, thank you. So, then getting back to, um, these other three issues, uh, veto power by the mayor, um, general powers and referendum, we advanced a, a memo that Mr. Wilber prepared a number of years ago, and it's rather lengthy, but thank goodness the, um, the pages are numbered. So, I would direct the council's attention to, and I don't, I don't know if you all took the time to read through all of this, it was kind of an interesting read, um, for about the first six pages, and then I began to wander a little bit. Um, so, about, uh, maybe a little more than halfway down, um, it says that, uh, perhaps it would be more helpful to follow the four general principles gleaned from the decisions of the Court of Appeals and writings of Professor McQuillan, when determining whether the mayor of Salisbury may exercise, uh, in this case it says for veto, Mayor Tillman was in office at the time. Uh, first, when the municipality's charter expresses that a specific action must take place by ordinance or resolution of the charter. Second, the provisions of twenty-three A subsection two, when taken in their entirety, demonstrate the general assembly's intention that a municipality enact ordinances when performing its legislative function. Third, the mayor does not have veto power over resolutions, when resolutions are the exercise of the council's administrative or ministerial powers. Fourth, regardless of what action is called by the legislative body, if a resolution in its substance and effect is legis, is a legislative act, it is an ordinance. Therefore, anyone may conclude that the mayor only has exercised, may exercise their right when presented with an ordinance or when the city council passes a resolution that is not administrative or ministerial in nature. And the conclusion is, the mayor of the city of Salisbury does not have the power to veto a resolution passed by the city council in its, in, in its administrative or ministerial capacity. The mayor has the power to veto a, a resolution passed by the council acting in its legislative capacity, regardless of what the council calls it. Perhaps the best solution to the problem is to amend the Salisbury Charter and Code to reflect the above discussed definitions. So, there are a number of places, uh, if you read through it a hundred and some where it references ordinances and fifty somewhere it says resolutions. And we needed to get this language corrected in terms of when, or when the mayor does not have the ability to, um, veto a resolution.
Well, I, so I think what we'd need to do is, I mean, throughout the code, we'd have to differentiate every time between an administrative resolution and a legislative reg, resolution.
And Mark wanted to weigh in on that?
Well, I think it, it really depends on what the purpose of the resolution is. So, it mean, if it, if it's a resolution that is intended to be legislative, it doesn't, well, I guess, his opinion is saying it doesn't really matter what you call it, if it's a legislative act. But if you're passing a resolution, for example, approving something, where the, the law requires that the council, uh, pass a resolution approving, you know, the sale of real estate or something like that, that would be an admin, a ministerial act or an administrative act that would not be subject to the veto power of the mayor. And, and obviously resolutions to change the charter would never be, uh, subject to veto power. But then that we get into the murky waters of veto and the budget, and that, that's been researched to death, um, and, uh, you know, I, I think the conclusion has been is that, that we do permit vetoes of that, but, um, there's, that's, that's a very debatable issue still.
The example given of an administrative resolution, um, the example, uh, supporting an affordable housing project, um, is that administrative inasmuch as it's council saying, we support something and no other power can change whether or not we support it, though we're not making a commitment of any, you know, budget or, you know, we're not making, making a commitment of funds or changing the law, we're just saying we resolved to show our support for the, is that, is that what makes it administrative?
Yeah, well, I mean, but administer, I think some of the, and I, I mean, I, you know, haven't looked at that memo recently, it's been a while since I've researched this issue. But, um, you know, I think where, for example, once property is deemed, um, and I can't remember, Tom can correct me on this, but if once property is deemed like surplus property and you saw, you know, approve selling that property, um, that's not really something that the mayor would veto. Because first of all, the mayor has to propose it as surplus property to begin with, but, you know, he couldn't then veto your approval of the sale of that property. That would be, that would be a ministerial or an administrative act.
Okay.
Um, not necessarily a legislative act. So, it's, it's, it's not real cut and dry, and, you know, the, the, this, this code, um, when this code was originally done, lots of the municipalities in the state of Maryland used very similar language. And for whatever reason, in the early drafts, they would jump back and forth between resolution and ordinance, when what they really meant was an ordinance or a legislative act. So, what we really have to do is go through there and make sure that the ones that we change, if we're going to change them to ordinance, are really the legislative acts that are.
So, we could, we could achieve this just by differentiating.
Using a different word. We could very easily accomplish that.
Not ordinance, legislative resolution and administrative.
We could stop calling, yeah, we could stop calling anything that was an ordinance a resolution.
A resolution. Okay. Does that, does that make sense to everyone? Is everyone comfortable with going through a differentiating appropriate, uh, def, you know, the appropriate acts as ordinances that are misrepresented as resolutions currently? And, yeah, if you could, if you could identify where that happens.
When you change.
Where there, where a change would.
Yeah, when, when you change the law, that's, that's a, an ordinance. But when you approve something that you, the code says that it has to be approved by the council, that's not an ordinance. That is approving some act that's going to happen. And you're not changing the law, you're just granting your approval.
So, the authority to entering an, enter an agreement, MOU or something like that? That's just.
Right, if, if, if the law, if an ordinance requires that the county approve an MOU, for example, you can approve an MOU and the mayor wouldn't veto your approval, because that's just the council saying, we approve of this, we're not changing the law, we approve of it.
And that's the council's authority only.
Exactly.
To make that difference.
Where, where the law says that.
If the council disapproves of something, he approves, he can't veto it.
Not, if the law requires your approval, then if, if you don't approve it, then it's, it doesn't happen.
Okay. So, could we get a list, I think before we know where we're going to go, can we get a list from you of all of the?
By definition.
Uh, yeah. Well, yeah.
I'm going to have to work with Tom, cause he's.
And I'm going to do this. Right back over to the clerk, so, yes, to answer your question, yes, we, we can do that.
I think someone has gone through and attempted to do that as part of this process.
All, all of the resolution, all of the places where it calls for resolution, where in fact, an ordinance would be.
That everyone is waiting to get me involved at the last minute, so that I'm not the one combing through every word of the code. They don't want to pay me to do that.
Got it.
So, Kim's not here.
I am.
Thank you.
This falls in your lap.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And when did you want that?
What are you doing tonight?
Five minute break.
I think we'll, you know, we'll, uh, it'll be a while before we're done with this process.
Well, what I'll do is I'll talk with Kim tomorrow and we'll sort of set a plan to sort of be working, right, and work on this along.
Good. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that takes us through SC two dash sixteen, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So, that's Article Two. Uh, we thought we'd tried just that article for now. Having said that, I did discover in, in preparation for this meeting, that we actually, we're going to need to go back to Article One, because you included the five districts, but we'll bring that shortly.
You'll bring that when you bring Article Three?
Yes.
Okay.
And that said, is it the council's desire to continue to go through these changes? Article Three, for example, um, simultaneously while we're working on cleaning up two, or do you want to just get through two and be done with it, make the charter changes?
No.
You want to keep moving?
Keep going, keep rolling.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to keep rolling, is, you know, eventually we need to get to the code and there's, there are going to be a lot of.
It, yeah, I mean, it's going to, it's going to take a while, but it won't be that bad, because there are some departments that were, um, not recommending any changes at all, so.
Okay. Okay. All right.
Thank you, that's helpful.
Can I, uh, ask for a step backwards to SC two dash eleven ordinances?
Okay.
This has to do with posting, uh, substance of ordinances, uh, and what it says here is, uh, "A statement of the substance of ordinance shall be published by posting the same at some public place in the city of Salisbury, or by printing the same in some newspaper of general circulation printed in the city of Salisbury." I would like to change that language to say that, well, if we print it in, in some general circulation newspaper, then we don't have to submit or post it in a public place. So, um, I would like that change, to change that language to reflect that it would be, and if feasible, by printing the same in a newspaper of general circulation and not necessarily printed in the city of Salisbury, because that would get it to be published at least in the public place.
Oh, yeah.
See what I'm saying?
What were you talking about, just announcements or, what are you talking about?
Well, when we have an ordinance, we're supposed to post it in a public place. And that would be where, Diane.
We post it on the website and we put it downstairs on the bulletin board.
Exactly.
And we, we put them in the paper if there's a public hearing, because we post about, well, we put the substance, I guess, in the ad about the public hearing, but it isn't like we put the whole ordinance like we would downstairs, but we give the gist of it.
So, it's that word, um, or, by printing in some newspaper of general circulation. I think that, you know, those, those pub, those, those places that you put it now, don't, they have to be there, period. There has to be a public, um, display, and that would be online as well as on, downstairs on the, on the bulletin board. And, uh, so I'd like to. And so, I'd like to remove that "or" and change that language to say that the newspaper is, is an option, but the posting in a public place is not an option. Do you hear what I'm saying here?
Well, I think, I think that would be fixed just by changing "or" to "and."
Yeah, we can do that.
Is there a circumstance under which we do not print, post a statement on the substance of the ordinance in the Daily Times, in the newspaper?
Our department does. I don't know if anybody else does, but we don't.
We don't do it.
Yeah, you say you only do that for a public hearing, right?
Right, if it's a public hearing, then you give the gist of what's gonna be discussed. But just for a regular ordinance, we put it on the website when we send the packet, you know, it's in the packet, downstairs.
And it's a few hundred dollars advertised.
Sure, right, yeah, yeah. So, if we were to change the "or" to "and," we'd have to significantly increase the budget, the advertising budget.
Well, that's why I say "and if feasible."
Okay.
And there is also the question of those paper printed in the city of Salisbury.
But, so, so what you're saying is, you wanna ensure that the "or" does not imply that the posting in the public place is optional?
That it's either, either or.
Got it.
You might be able to say "and at the option of the council publishing." In other words, where the council would decide whether each one should or shouldn't be published in a newspaper.
Well, what I like about that is, or, or saying at the option of so- someone, you know, the clerk, the council, whatever, you know, what I like about that is, it defines what "if feasible" means. You know, it adds, lends a little bit of definition to what that means.
And it would, it would allow you, the legislative discretion, to decide, should this or shouldn't this? Is it important enough to put in the newspaper and are we willing to pay for it?
And we have an established protocol already, so that would, that would funnel into this.
Okay. Is there consensus to make the change to, in SC two dash eleven, to the word "or" in the second sentence, to make that "if, or, and at the option of the council?"
Yeah. Also, a newspaper printed in the city of Salisbury, do we have any printed, any papers?
It doesn't have to be printed in the city of Salisbury, it has to be circulated.
Well, then, it says here, "Printed in the city of Salisbury," so we need to, we need to fix that.
We need to fix that.
Okay.
It has to be, 'cause we went through that with legal advertising, 'cause all our printing was Somerset Herald was printed in Salisbury, but the legal advertising was in Somerset Herald.
So, all we would need to do is strike the word "printed." Some newspaper of general, general circulation in the city of Salisbury. Everyone okay with that? All right.
I got a question too, but the notices. You know, PAC fourteen is like a calendar, can't you put announcements like that on PAC fourteen?
I believe we could.
They use PAC fourteen as another outlet for making announcements.
Why not?
Because, and what I'm thinking about is, is years ago, they used to publish the agenda of our city council meetings.
PAC fourteen?
In the paper.
Oh, in the paper.
In the paper. And they stopped it, I guess, because of cost or whatever. And people didn't know what the agenda was, but I, I was thinking about the agenda in the, in the, on the PAC fourteen.
On the website, or shown on PAC fourteen?
Mm-hmm, 'cause if an ordinance was coming up, you know, people could see PAC fourteen.
Sure.
We, we do send, when we send our media broadcast, everything that goes out for the packet and the agendas does go to PAC fourteen. But Kim and I could also reach out and see, you know, exactly, right? And whether you want that to be just the general material or something at your option.
I just thought the, the agenda.
Yeah, I thi- I think just the agenda.
Just the agenda, we don't need the, you know. Yeah. I wouldn't want everything in there, I'm just saying announce, you know, and even the public hearing, maybe could be advertising, it shouldn't cost us nothing.
Yeah, I, I think that can just be done through our relationship with PAC fourteen.
That's right, that's right. We had to put it in here, but I'm just thinking another outlet.
Sure.
Mr. Council President?
Yes.
Forgive me, I must've drifted off there for a second, or senior moment, whatever you wanna call it on that.
We'll call it that.
Well, yeah, that'll work. Where we're going to change "or," how did it read?
And...
At the discretion of the council?
I had said there, "And at the option of the council." So, in other words, it would never be mandatory unless the council directed that it be, wouldn't do.
Thank you.
One more thing about that, too, is we don't specify whether this is a daily or a weekly, and we have both of those here, too. So, shall we specify that it could be a daily or a weekly?
It's either or.
I, I think if we leave it as is, it offers the option to future councils.
Okay.
Any other questions on SC two or comments? Okay, all right, with that, we'll move on, but that was relatively painless.
Didn't wanna bite off more than we could chew first time, so, it was a sort of a test run, is the council okay with this format, getting the section above it and then staff recommendation below?
All right.
Thank you.
And so, we'll see those back in some form through Mr. Tillman as resolutions for charter changes. And however they can appropriately be packaged into the fewest number of charter changes, that would be appreciated. And then, on the question of the three sections affected by the veto issue, the definition of ordinance and resolution, the City Clerk's office will get us a report of where there would be an affected change, where there would be a change in the use of resolution versus ordinance. And we'll all, council will look at that again.
Could I make a request as well? Mr. Stevens, would it be possible for those changes to be highlighted, colored highlighted, so they stand out for us?
And what you received today?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine. I, I guess we've gotten accustomed to the notion that everything was printed off in black and white, but you're getting it electronically, so we can do that.
Right, thank you.
All right. Then we'll move on to the next item on our agenda. Next item on our agenda is the discussion, council discussion of the residency requirements for city boards and commissions. This is an item that was requested several months ago, and you can see I'm making an effort to get it off of our pending items list and to have a discussion. The, the discussion came up during the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee creation, and there was some discussion as to whether or not there was a, whether or not it was preferable to have, to geographically limit participation in these sorts of committees, boards, commissions as incentive to live in the city of Salisbury to participate, or to not be so limiting so as to include all of those people who participate in Salisbury, whether economically or, you know, through use of bike lanes or whatever it may be, and participate in boards and commissions, or certain boards and commissions, maybe better way to put it. And whether that should be allowed, or a mix thereof, absolutely. So, we put to council then for consideration what our policy ought to be on this matter.
Where they should live?
I'm sorry?
What'd you say, where the person should live?
No, yeah, I mean, the question is, you know, to council is, whether or not we have a hard and fast policy, or whether or not it changes from board to board and commission to commission. You know, for example, the recycling, recycling committee, we have geographical requirements in sort of the four quadrants of the city. You know, in other boards and commissions, we explicitly say, you must live in the city of Salisbury, in others, we don't say anything at all. So, the question is, how do we wanna handle this moving forward? Or do we wanna keep it as is and kind of, some boards, we deal with it, and others, we don't address it?
I think that it's so, it's so hard for people to sit on boards and find people. And if you just keep it condensed in the city of Salisbury, you're limiting the pool of people that volunteer. You have people that live in, in Salisbury outside the city limits, who think they're in Salisbury, part of Salisbury. I think that we could expand it to that part, because you're reaching out to part of, I would say Jersey Road, for instance, you know, that's Salisbury, they got the same zip code I have, but it's in the county, but still considered Salisbury. So, those folks, if you found a qualified person to sit on one of these boards, they can't sit on there if you're limited to just sitting, being in the city of Salisbury. I'm not saying to get someone from Sharp Town to be on a board, but I said within the, within the, outside the city limits of Salisbury, Salisbury. I would include those persons.
Other thoughts?
From my perspective, I think it should be residents of the city of Salisbury. And my reasoning is, we deny people who own businesses in town a voice, essentially, because they're, if they live out of town, and it seems to be discriminatory if you, if you allow outsiders to speak on potential resolutions and those kinds of things, make recommendations. So, I think it should be the city of Salisbury.
But I think also, what we decide in the city of Salisbury impacts the people outside of Salisbury. And they're part of our community. They have just been caught up in, say, for instance, urban service districts. They get city services, but they're in the county. And they don't have a, you know, really a say within our government, you know, what we do to them, because they get in the water and some get the sewer, some get the water, they're being charged double. So, they can't, they can't voice their opinion, because most of those are like rental properties or something, or something, it was, they were caught up years ago in what they did. And I think they, people that live out, just the borderline of the city, have opinions about our city, you know? And some of them are, now, I'm trying, and it's very difficult, especially for me, to recommend someone that's on a board to represent my community, because most of the people who was maybe sit on the board lives outside the, outside the city. People within the city, especially people on fixed income, they tend not to participate on committees, 'cause they're thinking about other things. Whether it's how to feed their families, how to pay the electric bill, but you can get fine quality, qualified people within Salisbury, but not Salisbury City. That's how I look at it, you know? But if we limit it to Salisbury City residents, how hard is it to define people to sit on these boards and commissions? How many vacancies do we have now? See? How many vacancies do we have on some of these boards and commissions? They're not flocking some of them to sit on, on boards and commissions. I know it's hard for the recycling committee, the way it's divided up.
Has been.
And it's a small committee.
I tend to think that those people should be from within the city limits. We have a population here of over thirty thousand people, if we can't come up with sixty people to sit on boards and commissions, and none of these have legislative power, they're all advisory commissions for the most part. So, each and every one of those boards, once they're manned, has the ability to call on people or accept people, because they're open meetings. Those people who wish to speak to matters and have particular expertise in any given field. And I think that what we need to do with each one of these boards and commissions, once, once they're, they're filled, is that people on those commissions and boards need to reach out to subject matter experts to determine what better course they can, they can have. I use the recycling commission as, as, as an example. It is difficult to get people in the recycling committee. But then I look at what the recommendations, over the years, I mean, I sat on the commit, on the committee for seven or eight years, I think, or as long as it existed, and not one of the recommendations that went from the committee to the city was ever recognized. It, it went zero. I mean, I'm having more, more traction doing it myself as a city council member, going from place to place to place to, to work on recycle issues than, than ever was going through the recycling committee. But I think that, you know, in a city of, of better than thirty thousand people, if you can't find sixty people to sit on a board or commission, something is a wrong. And I wanna figure out what that is.
But remember, the thirty thousand people may, are children and senior citizens.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, but they don't, they don't, that's not thirty thousand people that, adults that would participate.
Or let's say half of that, fifteen thousand people, okay? And, and some of those are students as well, who really don't, they're here, they're gone, they're whatever. And some of these commissions, you know, the, the issues that come up are very simple issues. Maybe it's time we look at each one of the boards and each one of the commissions and said, what do you actually do? And what have you done? And what, what opportunity is there to restructure it so that something can be done?
Yep.
At this point, I think the only board or commission that actually gets any, any notoriety is the Historic District Commission.
That's true.
And that's because those folks make decisions that affect a lot of people's well, you know, not so much their well-being, but their, their financial well-being.
I think that's probably true for the quasi-judicial boards in general. Planning Commission, Board of Zoning Appeals.
Building Board, Housing Board.
I think of the Planning Commission as a little more elevated than the other commissions for some reason, I, I don't know why I do that, but, well, it's because it's, it's, it's county and city.
I was gonna say, it's 'cause you sit on it.
No, that's not...
Well, see, it's count, what'd you say, it's county and city?
It's county and city. And, you know, we go to a wider, a wider notion of what can be done and what affects. You know, I, we, we make determinations on the county board or the, the Planning and Zoning Committee about what happens in Sharp Town, you know, I mean, it's...
Yeah, 'cause it can't be...
Yeah, and that really has nothing to do with what goes on in Salisbury.
You know, I, I think what we've probably stumbled onto is a broader conversation of the utility of, of advisory committees, the utility of advisory boards, and how long they are useful in their design and structure, and whether or not they're intended to be permanent, whether or not they're...
They're needed.
They need to be temporary. And I, I think maybe the conversation is less about the residency requirement, and that can probably be handled on a case-by-case basis. And if, if it makes sense to have a structure where you, you know, for a particular task force or something, where a lot of the expertise exists outside of the community that you want advising you, maybe it makes sense to structure it that way. Alternatively, if it's about, you know, something to do with neighborhoods, then you probably almost certainly want it to come from only within the city of Salisbury. So, I think that's something that we can address over time on a case-by-case basis, and I'm not sure it's something we need to resolve today. But maybe what we do need to endeavor to do from this point forward is to start to, maybe in the same way we're doing addressing the charter and the code, start to address the, the non-quasi-judicial boards, the non-permanent boards and commissions and committees, and to start to tackle one by one, whether or not they've achieved what they're intended to achieve when, when they were created. And maybe we create new ones because they're, I mean, think about the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, very different purpose than the Traffic and Safety Advisory Committee. We certainly could've transformed one into the other, but is there a utility in keeping the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee? I don't know, let's, let's have that conversation. You know, we can map out a timeline, and I think that council can begin to address those over the next few months, you know, and it, we can do it in bite-sized chunks, much in the way that we're addressing the code. But why don't we, why don't we start to tackle it in that way? And we can address with each one whether or not a residency requirement should be articulated or left alone. articulated or left alone.
I agree with that.
Everyone okay with that?
Yeah, we've just gone through catalog, you know, all the boards and commissions and understanding, um, where there are vacancies, so maybe we could also pull together the, um, the charge or duty for the e- each board or commission and sort of lay that out for the council to take a look at.
I think that's a good idea.
I'll get Ms. McBride to work on that.
Okay. I think it's incumbent upon us to, to, to ramp up our efforts to attend these meetings, you know, as council people, so that we have a, a finger on the pulse of what the committees are doing.
Now, wait a minute, you're getting ahead of it.
All right.
All right, let's go ahead.
We'll take that in a general discussion.
Well, let's, well, no, let's go ahead and jump to the next item on our agenda, which is council reporting form on city boards and commissions.
Okay.
Um, vice, council vice president Mitchell circulated, uh, for council, a, um, a, uh, form, a draft form, um, that council members would use to share what they, uh, learned and what they saw at, um, at the board or commission meeting that they represent, um, that they represent council on, uh, and, um, would kind of provide, uh, their fellow council members with an update. Um, I, I hope everyone had a chance from when she sent this about a month ago to look through it and see whether or not they thought the form would be, uh, useful. Um, I'll just, I'll go ahead and say, I think it's fine. I think it's useful. I didn't have anything to add or anything to delete.
It'll discipline me. To go to the lead.
That's good, right? I mean, it'll-
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I just, I just have a question. I just picked up my committees a couple, a weeks ago, and I attended my first meetings. Um, both of the committees that I sit in on have very detailed minutes.
Mm-hmm.
I'm just saying, there's enough forms going around, why not just distribute the minutes?
That's right.
I think you could certainly-
That's right.
Send the minutes around in place of this form.
Well, I mean, I, I just, I just think that to try to take and, 'cause-
I agree with that.
Both of the committees do, I, I was amazed at how detailed they are.
And, and I would say that with most committees, that's true. Um, if you look at, you know, even down to CCDC and, uh, all of the quasi-judicial-
And we get, and we get some of the minutes now.
Right.
So.
I think that would be fine, uh, if there was a case where, um, the minutes weren't being distributed or the minutes weren't available to the council member as the, uh, as the, the vehicle for sharing what happened, I, I think this could be a backup.
I would agree.
Is everyone comfortable with that?
And I would just as soon get them electronically than-
Abs- yes, absolutely.
Even scan them.
Yep.
Scan and send, yeah.
Okay.
More work for you, Diane.
All right, um, is there anything for the good of the order? No? Nothing? Or adjourned? Thank you all. Early. How do you like that? An hour early, how do you like that?
Makes me feel mad.
Yeah.